I'm going to call to order the Finance Committee meeting of the Seymour Board of Education. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, is there anybody who would like to make a public comment to the Finance Committee meeting? Public comment going twice. One more call for public comment for the Finance Committee meeting. Hearing that, we will move on to item number three. Discussion and possible action of the Financial Management Summary of January 9th. And there is a link to this in the regular board agenda. And like we do in most months, I will turn it over to Mr. Buschi to walk us through.
Thank you very much. Well, you'll notice this month in the report, we spoke about it, or I spoke about it a couple of months back. I was looking to try to refine the way items in this report are actually collated. You may recall some months ago, we pulled out all of the energy-related things from supplies, and we put them into a separate energy category. We've now done the same technology and with facilities. So custodial supplies, which used to be in with supplies, is now in with the facilities. Facilities used to be called infrastructure. Essentially, everything that relates to buildings, building-related equipment, repairs and maintenance, contract services, water and sewer fees, et cetera, is now all in one category called facilities. Technology comprises the, all the hardware and the software that is utilized district-wide, but not instructional technology, which still remains in supplies. Supplies essentially right now is mostly all instructional, except with the addition of office supplies and athletic supplies, because there really isn't any place else to put them, but they're clearly marked. When you look at the report, I also rearranged the order in which some of the things on the report are. For instance, after professional services, you're now going to see tuition and transportation right next to each other because they are related. You're then going to move into facilities. As you go down the line, you're going to see that they become of lesser importance. Obviously, the most important, certified, non-certified staff, et cetera, at the top, and then the ancillary expenses toward the bottom. Going on to the variances for this month, we are running, it's, now, this is a very fluid budget. And what I mean by that is, as we've now gone through six months of the fiscal year, four months of the school year, we're starting to get a clearer picture of what it's looking like. And as we see overages in certain areas that we've spoke about in prior months, for instance, repairs and maintenance, and I'll get into special education costs, we are also looking for offsetting areas where we can take surpluses and balance our budget. So we are continually mindful of trying to make sure that, you know, while we are looking at the things that we can't control, we are looking at those, even though there are purchase orders in place, that doesn't necessarily mean those funds have been expended. It doesn't mean necessarily that we're going to go over budget. In fact, obviously, the goal here is not to go over budget when we finally get to the finish line in June. Right now, there were some positive variances coming from certified staff. This is largely related to teacher turnover and the interim periods in which there have been some absences in both special education and in Unified Arts. We also have a positive variance in substitute teachers, but I will caution and say that obviously, we still have five and a half solid months of the school year to go, and there will be the need for substitute teachers, I am sure, and that variance may very well reduce. In the non-certified staff category, the surplus of about $120,000 is offset by $63,000 of temporary staffing. We continue to use outside agency for paraeducators. We have been bringing on some paraeducators, but we are still relying on the outside. There's $63,000 worth of, the positive variance is actually offset into the other professional services category. Employee benefits is running at approximately $100,000 of a surplus. $81,000 if this relates to health insurance costs. This is really just a function of elections that teachers have made. As I've said in the past, a family is, one family election is $35,000 to our budget. One single is about $14,000, and a two-person participants roughly $28,000 or so. So it doesn't take long to get to $80,000 if you have a few people who've opted out, or if you've had staffing who've left with other staffing coming in and not picking the same category. Facilities, we're just dealing with the same thing we're always dealing with in facilities. There are just things that need to get fixed that we didn't anticipate, and obviously, we need to fix them. Now, the biggest change this month, and I hinted at it last month, because we had knowledge that we were getting some more students in the district, special education students that were requiring out-of-district tuition and transportation. We've picked up, since the beginning of the year, we've increased by six students. We're now up to 28 students in the district. I've sat down with Mrs. Bella Vance, and we've gone through line item by line item by line item to identify and try to make sure we've got our numbers right, and also to make sure we're properly tracking. But here's the problem. The problem is, you bear the first $75,000 to $80,000 of direct costs, and then you only pick up roughly 80% of what you, what you will spend over that. But when you have students who come in late in the year, it's very hard to get to the threshold of 75,000 or 80,000. So if you pick up four students at 80,000, there's $360,000 right there that you would have no chance of covering any money on. So we again have been making an effort to try to offset these increased costs. But right now, we're running at a negative variance between tuition and transportation combined of roughly $300,000. The last item is, we are, we, the new contracts are in force with custodians, nurses, and secretaries. We have a contract in place for next July 1st for the administrators. And the only contract left that we are still continuing negotiations with is a paraeducators unit. We have another meeting this week. Lastly, much to everyone's pleasure, we finished the audit, it is done. As far as the Board of Education was concerned, we didn't, were not told of any adjustments to our financial statements, so the numbers we reported back in July, which were our closing numbers, were in fact our numbers. And that's my report.
Congratulations on that. The audit.
Well, thank you very much. And I will have to say that, you know, the central office staff put quite a bit of time in and preparing for the audit, having once done that, twenty years ago. I have a pretty good idea of what they're looking for, and we tried to anticipate that and be prepared. And the best way to get an audit accelerated and done is to give them what they want and have it work out right the first time. So we were very pleased to see that it was done before Christmas.
Yeah, I think this is commendable. I just want to say a thank you to Mr. Buschi for Lisa and Kathy and for the team. It was a lot of preparation, a lot of work. They were very coordinated, and we were trying to get it all done before the move. And so it was just crucial with the timing. It was sure a lot different from last year's, which was like it was never going to end. But I just want, I'm glad it's completed.
Beth, of course, do you have any questions? Comments?
So we're right now pretty much trending right at budget.
We are trending at budget. And I will, I mean, what I'll tell you is, in the course of doing budget preparation, I've flipped through 650 purchase orders so far to get a sense of, A, what are our recurring costs, and B, what's hanging out there that is parked but not spent yet? Because I'm going, I know I'm going to need to go after some of these purchase orders we have that we have unspent funds on. Each of the individual schools, just so you know, was given a budget at the beginning of the year with very specific line items, possibly like a dozen or so, with specific budgets that they were allocated. And I give them a monthly report telling them how they're tracking against each of those line items. Overall, every one of the schools, including special education, in the grand total of things, is running under their budgeted numbers. Now, I have no illusions that that money won't be spent, but at least we're not going over. So, and that's not a real big piece. It's mostly in the supplies category, to be honest with you. The things that aren't in the supplies category relating to software, those are recurring contracts. They're educational-related contracts, and so those are not going to go away. But as far as some, it's not really discretionary money for educational supplies, but the schools have been very good at adhering to their overall budgets. So yes, we are trend-tracking, trending to stay on, stay on budget. But the P O system's working, and we're having conversations when we, when people feel that there may be a variance of some kind. I get a phone call from a principal, and we talk about it.
Could you give us a sense of what those numbers are for the schools?
You mean what those budgets were that they had?
Mm-hmm.
He could send that to you.
I didn't bring it with me, but I could send it to you.
He can send it to you.
I would be curious to see it, because I understand it all gets bucketed into various different line items with the bulky and supplies, but it would just be interesting to know and understand what each school was allocated to spend as they basically see that, not discretionary, planned, but.
Yeah, I had, this is roughly like what a schedule looks like. And then, so here's their budget, here's what they had spent through December. I had sent these out and asked them to start giving me their numbers for this year.
And that's okay, we don't want to see it on a monthly basis. I'm just saying overall, like let us be, amount allocated to each of our four schools.
I think it'd be good to just send the worksheets.
Yeah, I can send you the worksheets.
Show the complete detailed, you know, breakdown of what they have. I think it's good right now specifically for the board to look at and reflect.
Sure. It was our first, by the way, in the meantime, Dr. Compton, but it was our first foray into this. So what I said to each of the principals, assistant principals was, the individual budget amounts that you have are not sacred in the sense that you cannot go over that number. It was our first shot at trying to give them a budget. And it was based on, honestly, what little data I had about what was being spent in these individual schools when you take out the things that were dumped into categories that they didn't belong in. So now what I've said to them is, now look at your budgets for next year with an eye toward refining the redistribution of those numbers. What I will tell you is, is that the budgets that are coming back from the schools now, in the grand total, are consistent, they've just moved around some of the line items. So I'm not seeing this massive, like, new request coming from each of the schools. Everyone is really trying to stay within what it was that they were allocated this year. And, you know, paper's up. I mean, there was a time when a carton of paper was $70, which, you need paper. And people were scrambling, trying to figure out, you know, should I wait? Should I borrow from another school? Can we, you know, is any reasonable expectation the price of paper was going to come down? And we're dealing with these things because in the past, it was just, put the P O in, buy the stuff, and then let the pieces fall where they may. Now it's, I see the requisition, and I'm, wait a minute, do you not have any paper? You know, and is it possible we can?
Wait until the pressure?
Wait until Christmas, and then when they have, you know, the Black Friday sale or something, we can go to Staples and buy a ream of paper for $40? You know, it's that kind of thing. So people are getting better at, because they have more information and they understand better. So it, you know, I do think it's going to help us because price, the price pressures are not going to decrease.
Right. But it's also too, teaching them in regards, not that we don't have very highly intelligent principals, but it's just teaching them to live within their means. I think things got a little out of whack from 2019 and '20, and then you went into COVID and so forth. And there really wasn't a structured budget. Basically, school budgets should look very similar. I don't care what school district you're in, but what the basic needs are in the codes. And that's kind of basically what's happened here, process and protocol, and basically the same type of unified budget for each school, what they're looking at between their supplies, their software, staff development, and a lot of different things. So got a much better handle on it and work very closely to make sure that they're coding in the correct categories.
I think that's great, and it's appreciated, and I very much like the reformatic organization of the report. I did jump to the last column, and had a few panicked moments, but then realized that it was showing the increase year over year.
Yeah.
And they're hypothetical at this point, too. So it's like, okay, no, reorient, move over to the left.
And maybe I need to put that column someplace else.
Are there any additional questions? Comments?
No, I'll move to recommend to the full board the approval of the January 9th, 2023 Financial Management Summary.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I do not have a chairman's report, except to say that I was intrigued with what you said about, if a specialist student comes in midway through the year, we're still expected, we still won't get reimbursed until four and a half times the full year tuition. I would have thought it was prorated. So essentially, the state or the fund wins if an outplayed special education student travels from school to school. Right?
School district, yes.
Yeah, yes, the district, school district. That is very, very.
And it probably works the other way, too. If you've spent 60 grand on a child that leaves in January, you're not going to get reimbursed.
That's what I mean.
That's a big loss.
So you do your first report December 1st, you do your second report March 1st, because the thought process at the state is, anybody coming in after March 1st isn't going to cost you more than $75,000 or $80,000.
Right.
And so therefore, you may as well just put the report in. And we were, Mrs. Bella Vance and I were looking at the costs of the students that came into the district with I E Ps in their hands. And we were, came to the conclusion, which is how this turned out to be $311,000 variance, was that if we get $6,000 out of that, we'll be lucky.
And that's the unfair thing in regards which Connecticut needs to relook at. The funding process of what they do is not the best plan at this time. It's really not with how the system works. We currently, we started out with 22 students that were out of district, and we're now up to, what?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And it was 27 or 28 out-of-district students. So our number-one priority is going to be working and addressing with the special education budget. We want to give every kid the opportunity for services for what they need. But this is a budget area we're going to have to look at very closely and very intense, and look at how we can, look at what we can do with what we have.
My guess is it's too early to make a judgment as to whether the student would be well-served to stay here in district next school year. It's probably too early to even start guessing at that. Okay, any, anything else, Dr. Compton?
No, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Finance Committee meeting is adjourned.
Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome to the January Seymour Board of Ed Meeting. Please rise for the pledge. All right, we'll just start with a quick round of introductions, and we'll start down there with you guys.
Hi, I'm Sophia Motel from San Antonio.
Tyler Lang in this senior suit represented.
Stefan Houdyak, board member.
Beth Mysteriak, board member.
Kristen Brunel, board member.
Chris Champagne, board chair.
Ed Strumello, board secretary.
James Carafallo, board member.
Kristen Harmeling, board member.
Shannon Levy, board member.
Dr. Susan Compton, school superintendent.
Leigh Andarty, board clerk.
All right, first item we have up is the Board and Administrative Recognitions. Seymour Champion Recognitions with Bunge School up first.
Okay, let's start with Bunge School. Mrs. Free is administrator tonight. Again, this is a very special program for us. It's always a great recognition time to recognize our outstanding Seymour champions. And for those parents that don't know, this is a very distinguished award, because it represents students who are very supportive and modeling excellent character education. So we're very proud of you tonight. I think you've earned a lot of your certificate in the blood of Seymour champion. It was very special to listen to.
So Bunge School. Mr. Strumello is coming up.
All right, so first we want to honor Nilani. That's her. And I'm going to say a few things about you, so stay up here, okay? So Nilani is a motivated learner. She comes in every day ready to learn and to help others. She's been part of the top of the leaderboard of I S L since we started with 194 proficient skills. She has already earned a bronze belt in a Coochie class for the reading Olympics by reading more than 75 books in the first part period and has exceeded her gold in Lexia each week. Nilani set goals for herself and achieved them with all of her hard work. So give her a nod.
There we go. It's always nice when we have the mom and the dad together. Sometimes grandparents.
Sarah has shown she is highly motivated to approach. She is determined to grow her learning in all areas. Sarah is attentive during classes and is not afraid to try something new. She does not let any stage stop her and uses those to continue to grow. Sarah is excited to learn new things and looks for ways to share her learning with her friends. She has demonstrated growth in math and math. Even when faced with challenges, she always has a smile and wants to keep trying.
Okay, Mr. Hatfield, our vice chair, is going to present some awards as well as Mrs. Shannon Levy. So if you all can come up. Okay, Mr. O'Lake, come on up, you and Stacy. You're going to take the two of you to come up for the report. Just like to be together.
So our first recipient is Addison Champagne.
And in the picture here. Come on, Jack.
I still got, I got material. So Addison is in Mrs. Purcell's 5th grade class, and she shares that Addison is always motivated to read independently and says feeling reading helps to penetrate in chapter two if you see any test through to completion. Addison displays enthusiasm for a particular reading series that she's hooked on and encourages her peers to do the same. A truly engaged reader is someone who gets lost in a book. It has always looked forward to doing exactly this during our school day. It's awesome witnesses every single day. Congratulations, Addison.
Let's get a picture with parents.
Next one is Bletus Foskett.
Very proud, stand up here, we've got a nice picture.
So Bletus is in Mrs. Kimble's 5th grade classroom. He is a highly motivated student who seeks out challenges and creates opportunities.
Someone said that maybe you would see you want your house tonight. I see all.
Yeah, okay, had a pasta party, so that's wonderful.
You check the shirt, maybe?
Yes, yes, so I just want to also say that Mr. Estramello here, and so is Mr. Freud. I've been here a year and a half, but thanks to you, we started out as freshmen, being on that hard-to-be freshman, and so I want Mr. Estramello to say a few words.
Okay, you want to go first?
I was gonna go, I was gonna go over some of his things. Well, I was gonna throw something, but go ahead. I still might under.
Go ahead, go.
First of all, this young man has grown up to a fine individual. He had, you know, things weren't perfect growing up, and the loss of his father, and you all feel. But also, living in a house with so many women. I have five sisters, so I could totally empathize, just saying, you're a tough guy. The, he, like, some of it's gonna be redone. Kayden here is a senior class president, he's been a three-year starter on the basketball team, two-year starter on the football team. As a quarterback, he was named Class S All-State as a junior in football, and Republican American Athlete of the Week multiple times. He was named All-NBL twice, and was named to the Top 26 All-State by the College High School Coaches Association. He finished the senior year fifth in the state with 2,608 passing yards, and was second in the state in passing touchdowns with 33. He set school records for most passing yards in a season, that was a 2,608, passing touchdowns in a season with 33, and passing touchdowns in a game, where he threw seven touchdowns against Torrington. He finished his career at Seymour High School with 4,360 passing yards, which is the sixth highest in the school's history, and 54 passing touchdowns, tied with fourth in school history. He's led us, and as a quarterback, he's led us to two Class S playoff appearances. In basketball, Kayden earned All-NBL, he's a beast, I'm just saying. All-NBL copper two years in a row, and is a two-time captain. And again, he accepted a full-time scholarship to continue as academic and athletic at the University of Maine, where he plans to study finance and play Division One football.
I was gonna say the Division One, but you took that. But now, correct me if I'm wrong, you also do Track Two, I believe, right?
No.
No, okay.
Think about it.
Okay, well, that'd be good, because the CIAC and CAS likes our athletes to do more than one sport instead of specializing. He's a perfect example of that, because there are very few kids that want to do that anymore. But that's what we expect with our kids to do all through sports or three seasons, and he's a perfect example. But I'm sure there's battles at home about who's the better basketball player, who's got more points scored, because his sisters are playing at college, so he has a little competition there as far as the basketball.
They never threw a touchdown.
But he's gonna lead us to the, and I say yes because I help out the basketball team, he's gonna lead us to the state tournament this year, and we're gonna win some games on that. But we're very proud of Kayden and all of your colleagues. Okay, good job, Kayden.
First, like, woman, I know Anne Marie, that you've been at many games and watched this young man. Would you like to come up as well?
No.
Thank you.
All right, as usual, I know it's getting late, but taking a minute or two to break, if folks wanted to go to the little, I'm sure they don't have to mess the kids' house. So we'll take a couple minutes to break, you can stay, rowings, and then once we come back, we'll hear from our high school student reps. All right, next up, we have item three, student reports, and we'll turn it over to Tyler and Sophia.
So our debate team, they had a tournament on the 10th of December.
A little bit louder?
The team finished fifth out of 47 other competing teams. Freshman Alyssa Vergatti was named the top novice, if I'm saying that right, during the competition. There are 93 other participants just did very well coming into that. As we briefly talked about with Kayden, the NCAA signing day was before holiday break. During that last week, we had seven students from Seymour High School who signed commitments to continue their athletic careers at the collegiate level. Kayden Dressick's playing football at the University of Maine, Connor Ito, baseball at Wilson College, John DeBarber, baseball at Wheaton College, Arianna Smith, volleyball at Avert University, Sophia Veleco swimming at Sacred Heart University, Katrina Larry swimming at Central Connecticut State University, and Kaylee Roxo playing soccer at Manhattanville College. For boys' basketball and girls' basketball, they're both playing Watertown. Boys will be home tomorrow, girls away. We'll have kind of our final report on the winter athletics at the February meeting. A couple of school-wide things, we have multiple ski trips that are coming up to Magic Mountain and Mohawk Mountain. Students are able to sign up. Midterm exams are gonna begin next Thursday, January 19th, and they last four days with two periods per day. And the Corral performed during the winter concert before break, and the honors ensemble class traveled to the middle school where they performed for students during several different lunch periods.
From Student Council, before we ended and went into holiday break, they held a spirit week, and some of the themes for that were flannel and fleece day, festive dress day, ugly sweater day, and holiday movie character day. Hope Club held a coat and scarf drive, and that was completed last month benefiting the homeless. The Future Business Leaders of America had a toy drive, and that was completed last month as well for the holidays, and that was done to benefit surrounding organizations. National Honor Society had a clothing order, and that was completed to allow students that are a part of it to be able to buy apparel showing that they're a part of National Honor Society. National Honor Society and Math Club will join together to tutor students preparing for the upcoming midterm exams. And middle school staff members are looking for a few members to assist with their after-school academy program. And then lastly, one of our new kind of programs and clubs is the CLS mentoring, which is students from Seymour High School are getting paired with kids from elementary school at CLS, and they're creating kind of a, like, sibling relationship where you go once a week and meet with your student, and you play games and talk to them, and kind of just build a trust and relationship with them. That's it.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for Tyler or Sophia?
Very good, excellent.
And I don't know if you guys know, but Ms. Veleco is Jim's granddaughter. All right, if nothing for you, you know the drill, stick around, hang out, take off. I don't think there's, oh, there's midterms, right? All right, let them go.
I always go study. Thank you for the great report. We want to bring some more of our students with the athletic scholarships in and recognize them as well.
All right, item five, reports, special ed enrollment report. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Item four, public comment. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to make a comment? Public comment going twice, third call, public comments. Public comment is closed. Now, item four, special ed enrollment report. Five? I'm a little messed up today, it's the new year. Five, the special ed enrollment report. I don't see it attached, but I know it was in the list.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions? I know Dr. Boyle's not here.
Yeah, he's, he has been a little sick, so he's been out, so you'll get it a little bit later.
All right, item six, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Estramello, do I have a second? Mrs. Burnoff, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
I, I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna ask for items to be removed, which is next, but... Just for the donation, right, don't we have to, when we make the donation, doesn't it have to direct the superintendent as to where to put the, you know, the...
Yeah, to direct the superintendent to spend it, delegate it in the right way.
We need to create another line to say that, because it doesn't say that anywhere.
It does not say that.
I want to move that.
Oh, yeah, so you want to remove item E?
Yeah.
Okay. Want to just...
Okay.
We'll make it with the motion with item E removed.
Okay.
You good with that, Mrs. Burnoff?
Yeah.
Okay. Got that, Leanne, that we did the motion?
Got it.
Were that removed?
Yes.
All right, anything else? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Oppose, staying, passes, none, 9-0-0.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation with gratitude to Mr. Tim Saic for approximately 700 tennis balls, and direct the superintendent to...
Distribute it to him.
Disperse or distribute such donations.
You can use it on chairs and different things. Plus athletics as well, there's a lot of things.
All right, motion by Mr. Hatfield, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Estramello, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Oppose, staying, passes, 9-0-0. Item number eight, discussion possible action. Item eight is the guided student support. I don't know, Dr. Compton, you want to speak to this?
I would just like to address it in regards, this is something that they've done in the past. We'd just like to give them the opportunity to do it again. They've done the guided student support, and it's a peer tutoring component. And basically, it requires two faculty advisors, and it would run from, it would run on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays after school to about 3:45 every week from February the 27th through June the 1st. And how we're recommending to pay for this, it would just be transferred from the unused appendix, which we really should say D, it shouldn't be the E there because of the contract lettering change. And that's what we'd like to do for this year.
All right, any questions, do I have a motion?
I just have a quick question. I guess this is not, this is also supposed to be this program, about what kind of transportation would be available or is available that kids or, you know, would have access to at this time to support the program?
That is the hard part, it's a situation to where the parents would have to work transportation out. Due to our busing situation, we can't really, I mean, we're lucky to do the runs with all of the, you know, with our buses. So we don't really have a transportation means, it would be just for the parents that could get them, come and pick them up, or however they could. Because we can't, at this point, we can't run a bus, there's not really a bus available. Check on it, but I don't think, you know, it's been a problem.
So I guess just if I make the judgment follow, you know, 3:45 sometimes it's tough, you know, so as we continue to find new ways to support the students, maybe that's something we can take a look at, is is that time, you know, instead of running it three days, can you go to two days and make it a little longer? Again, working with the funding numbers.
Right, yeah.
Just to, again, give as many people access as possible.
That's a good point, Mr. Hatfield, because two days and staying a little bit longer really would be more conducive for parents for pickup. So that's something I'll mention to Mrs. Roden and Mrs. Reynolds in the future, and see what we can do to adjust the cost. But right now, it's three days, and if we had an ideal situation, we had a little bus that could, you know, take some of these children home. We gotta continue to work with transportation and the cost and see what's available. But really, two days a week works out much better than three. So we might still possibly do that, but if you're gonna prove it tonight, and if there's any kind of change, we could come back. Okay?
Anything else on this? I have a motion, I'd like to make one.
Sure.
Okay, Mrs. Nysteriac.
I'll make a motion to approve the guided support, student support, including the necessary faculty advisors.
All right, a motion by Mrs. Nysteriac, do I have a second?
Second.
Miss Harmon, any other discussion?
I thought Jay's comment was great, I think that's the challenge with all the after-school programs at the middle school. From what I understand, there used to be a late bus, but given our transportation challenges, there hasn't been. So I think for this program, if there's a way to extend the hours and do two days a week, that's a great idea.
Tuesday, Thursday would be great, or at least two days a week. So we'll check with and see what could be worked out in the balance. Be a lot more convenient for the parents at work, and 3:45 is an odd time.
Especially if you have kids in elementary schools that's pick up for little ones.
Well, that's good.
Do you have something? Nope. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Oppose, staying, motion passes 9-0-0. Item 8B, the admin position at central office, turn that over to Dr. Compton.
Yes, I would just like to mention that we have had discussion on this. You've received a draft job description. I've also spoken with the administrators and also the administrators' union. This is something that, in regards to this position, I want you to take into consideration. I'd appreciate tonight if you don't act on it, we're still working through the hoops. I did check, and with legal advice, technically, and I also sent you a copy as well. Technically, a position, if it's not an associate or assistant superintendent, is basically supposed to be in the administrators' union. I checked around too with some of the neighboring school districts, and this type of position is in the union. Going back to history, there was a position very similar that's still in the union contract that was a director of instruction for K-8. This would be in the position that the board would have to create, which you have the right to do, as Mr. Estramello always reminds Dr. Compton. Only the Board of Education can create positions, okay? It's always important to know, I can't create them, the union can't create them, whatever. It's, you know, this is how we do business. So, with that being said, when you go to the administrative reg, it's well spelled out on section 10, 153B. I shared this today with some of our union administrators and their officers, because it's important to know. I don't do anything without keeping everybody abreast. I think most of you know I hide nothing, or I try not to hide anything. I want to be very transparent. I spent a lot of time researching a lot of different job descriptions across Connecticut. I've looked at chief academic officer separate, I've looked at combined, I've looked at Fairfield specifically, Kristen, which was very well done, I've looked at Guilford, I've looked at Milford, I've looked at Region 16, I've looked at various places. And I've also compared our job descriptions from the past as well, and that's all in this notebook. I think it's important that I do my research, and that's why I'd really like to have a separate meeting. Meeting shouldn't last too long, but just a special call meeting, this is a very important decision. And I truly feel that this is the right way to go right now. Now, I will tell you, I don't think any positions ought to be abolished, best not to abolish, you're always better to keep them there. You never know when they need to come back. Based upon budgetary issues and where we are, and looking at costs, certain positions that get very, very top-heavy and very expensive. So in regards with the cost and the situation, not that a position is not valued, and not that it's not what you pay, because I think you pay for what you get. But I think in this situation, at this time, this is the most feasible type of position. I truly believe the emphasis needs to be on student achievement, with curriculum and instruction and assessment, being in the classrooms, and really, I want an emphasis on curriculum alignment, vertical and horizontal alignment. I want pacing guides that cover K-12 and all the content areas of science, mathematics, language arts, social studies, so forth. Due to a lot of time restraints, due to COVID, there have been a lot of things that a lot of districts couldn't do all of this because of what, how it set people back. So the administrators are on board, I think our former associate superintendent did an excellent job, but there's not enough with different responsibilities. There were some things that were very heavily put on the associate superintendent that sometimes, sometimes can be the job of the superintendent. For those of you that do not know, I've been a former director of curriculum and instruction, and a former assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction, so I've got a very strong background there. So I think this is something that we need to focus on. I think we can have some cost savings right now. I think we need to look and see down the road, if enrollment increases, or if the budget issues get better, there can be a time and a place. But I think also, this is an opportunity to look within our district, you can also look outside your district, let the process work. But I truly believe this is the right direction to go, that's all I want to say about it. I think this is something that needs to be an in-depth discussion with you as members of the board and myself. Not that it wouldn't be open to the public, because everything is open to the public. I just think we need time to sit down and talk about it, show you the comparisons of what we have. So I'm asking you not to take any action tonight. I've worked with our attorney and the recommendations, and if this position comes to be approved, it really does need to be in the union. I really have to commend our administrators, I will say this in closing, we had a great meeting last Friday, and they said, "Dr. Compton, we want to be supportive of you," and whatever, you know, they kind of worry about me being the loner or the outsider out of that organization. But, you know, I've been in the business a long time, and I truly feel this is what we need. And I could, I don't know everything, okay? Let's table it, and it's considered to look and study.
Can, Leanne, can you send out a survey to see everyone's availability? I know...
Because we need to move on this pretty quick.
Liaison meetings coming up, there's the budget meetings.
We got the budget meetings Wednesday night, and again, on the Tuesday right after Martin Luther King Day, and then we have the negotiations meeting, so we need to squeeze one more little special call in there.
If no objections, we'll move on to item C, which is the painting of student parking spots. Do you have an update? I know you had a facilities meeting.
We did, so the facilities meeting committee met earlier this evening. It was Mr. Freud and Mr. Connors from Facilities, both of which provided additional information on research they had done at other area high schools that had a similar program, and they were concerned with maintenance of the parking services as well as potential vandalism. So at the facilities meeting, we did have a motion, and it was denied as the proposal. However, I will say that the committee urged the superintendent and her staff to try to find another outlet for creative space for the seniors, but the external use of the parking spaces was thought to be a maintenance and potential vandalism issue.
And I assume you agree?
Yeah, I think it's been a good process. I mean, it's a situation to where, after doing research, and Tim Connors was here earlier, as well as Mr. Freud, it's the cost of maintenance has become a real problem, and he talked to the facilities guy at Oxford, and I talked to superintendent at Oxford. And he talked to facilities guy at Oxford, and I talked to superintendent at Oxford. They had approved this three years ago, the last two years they've denied it, and it's the cost of the high maintenance. And it's really turned in, and then something about toxins in paint and the drainage, so I don't know that part. But I do understand about the cost of maintaining. But I think we can find a way that they can, we can try to be more expressive to let them, who knows? We might come up with some way, Mr. Freud and I are going to try to think out of the box. And they do do senior murals, but something that could be a special wall, a special area for them.
All right, any questions, thoughts?
The young man did have, he did have an excellent proposal, he did a great job. We'll probably go back to him and talk about, we'll do a follow-up.
All right. If nothing else, we can move on, excuse me, to item nine, information. We have the calendar that we approved last month, some info on cheer uniforms, activities and recognitions, some committee meetings, and a few hires. Oh, and a reservation. Any questions on anything in that section? All right, we're breaking records tonight. Board of Ed comments, superintendent report. I don't have much, I don't really have much of anything, just no thank you ahead of time for all the time that I know we're going to spend this month and on the budget, I know. Have a lot of, a lot of those meetings coming up, and yeah, we all love this time of year. So I'll go around, Shannon, anything from you? Mr. Garofalo?
No.
Mr. Stamelo?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Afield?
Nothing.
Mrs. Harmon? Mrs. Nesteriak?
Well, I'm not.
I knew it!
I'm all set.
I should have took a bet tonight with you.
Yeah, tonight would be nice.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, Dr. Compton?
I just want to remind as you mentioned, we have negotiations meeting Wednesday, am I correct, Stefan? Next Wednesday, next Wednesday. I'd like.
After that.
Yeah, right, so we've still been very, you know, this, this, this whole fall, everybody's done a really good job with the liaison committee and moving forward. I just want to mention that Mrs. Brooks shared with the email, she's saying that she has enough money left to provide free meals to students from January the sixteenth to January the thirty-first. So what we're trying to do is, we're going to work with these families that really need to submit and apply for free and reduced lunches. Very confidential, times are hard now, and this can give some opportunities. We want to set up a, kind of like a workstation at each school of where we can make sure if they're having trouble with understanding English, one of our administrative assistants has a degree in Spanish, and whatever we need to do. But we really need to help with this application process, all, in every way we can, because that also impacts our funding.
Just to the chair, is the application available on Spanish as well?
Yes.
And that's from the state or from?
We can, we can, can you have it translated?
But I'm sorry, is it a state form, or we have our own internal form?
It's actually a state form, Jay.
Yeah, they, they, I'm just, I was curious.
I would assume that they do one, I can't imagine they don't, but that could be a problem as well. Because I've not filled one out, so I looked at it carefully. But I will, I will check into it, because we really need to push these applications.
I just want to be sure that we have sent a link to the application that's not inside the Titan School Solutions, because we might have parents that have never logged on to Titan Schools. Because I know you can access the link to apply within that platform, but I just want to be sure that we're going about it in multiple ways.
Right, we need multiple, multiple ways, because it's, some of them do not know how to go there and do that, and that's where we need to provide the support at each school.
Do we, we don't have any, I'm trying to think, we don't have any like conferences or anything coming up where we could take like a conference room in the front of the building, and just put a little sign up, and like close the door and go in with folks?
We need to have like a little station to where that they can set up and come in and help them fill them out, honestly.
Sorry.
No, I, I just thought something I would like for the athletic committee to have a meeting sometime this month. So, Leanne, if you could send out a do, so that also.
Athletic committee.
Committee?
Yeah.
During the month of January.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, thank you, Mr. Stamelo, we really need to meet, because there's some, you know, just things with some new mandates, basketball, scoreboard, different things that, that we need to decide upon. Also, and also with this report, you need to know, there was a little concern about middle school cheerleading and a complaint that was on Facebook. So I did talk with the cheerleading coach yesterday, we're having a meeting tomorrow at two fifteen here at the middle school. Mrs. Roden and Mr. Stacy and myself will be meeting with this cheerleading coach. There was misunderstanding about cheerleading competitions. And the parent that was upset was based upon the fact, parents were doing fundraising for a competition. So we'll make sure moving forward, there's no misunderstandings, because that's what happened. And I don't want you as a board of education getting slammed for something you knew nothing about, and neither did I till it came up on Facebook. So it's something that we're going to get this resolved, they will participate. They're actually participating in three competitions, but two that the board will pay for. Parents already raised, fundraised for a competition in Newtown, so we'll make sure this doesn't happen anymore. But I just want to clear the air and let you know that it was an issue, and we got to get, we don't want this to happen again without good communication. I also want to mention, we had a nice administrative meeting this past Friday.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
A minute, before you leave the sports.
Yes.
Part of it, just for new board members or board members don't realize, any of our support groups for the high school sports, you know, site out club, or hoop, hoopsters, whatever, all of those committees have to be, were approved by the board before they became.
Done right.
A committee supporting it. I'm not sure we've done that at the middle school, but I think it's probably advisable for us to do the same thing. That if, to protect parents and to protect the kids, that if any group wants to support, you know, middle school soccer or basketball or something, that, that group, before they get going, needs to get approval from the board of Ed. Because all the elements, like I said, were all approved by a board vote to be a committee. That's some history on that.
Thank you, there's also, the Wildcat Club is going to be doing a athletic banquet for the high school football team. I'll send that out to you, I just received that email today, so you may be interested in going. This year, I'm going to make sure I'm there, I'm not sure if it's February the sixth, I'll, I'll, I did have the email here, but I will send it to you tomorrow, to make sure that we are represented this year, those that can attend.
Sorry, Dr. Compton, excuse me, through the chair, before you move on, I do have another question about the nutrition services.
Yeah.
I read something recently where it was talking about that Titan, that it's two dollars and sixty cents per transaction or something. Every time you go to put money in there, and I was like.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if that's a hefty rate, or, you know, I, I guess I, in the future, I'd like to see us kind of get some more information about that, get some, you know, handle or wrap our head around how that works. And is it, is that happiness or the term, if we use it, you know, maybe we could get some more information.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that, I can understand where you're coming from.
We, we actually brought this up, probably two.
Two years ago.
More, yeah, before COVID. It is two fifty dollars, two fifty for each transaction, it's also five dollar reminder fee if you go negative. And so we did, as a board, talk about this about three years ago, and we asked Mrs. Brooks and then finance director to look into other options, because I personally find it absurd, in this day and age, that they're charging transaction fees and a five dollar reminder fee. And I, I don't, I don't know if COVID interrupted the conversation or, or what, but no other alternatives were brought to the board for a different provider of the service. Because I agree with you completely, I think it's absurd that we're charging parents for transactions.
I think the only conversation we had was you could write a check or bring cash instead of that.
I think you're correct.
Yeah, I think that's what came out of that, but.
A great alternative. I can't even figure out how to set up recurring payments, so like.
And, and through the chair, I think this conversation, you know, again, to Mrs. Harmon's point about COVID, I think there really hasn't been that much of a conversation, you know, because maybe people, I don't know.
Once you're free.
Yeah, right. People haven't used that necessarily, maybe. So you're right, I think it hasn't been a long time. But when I looked at the meal prices, you know, if, let's just say you were to do it every, once a week, if my math is good, you know, it takes, whatever, forty weeks.
And, and by the way, it's per child.
Oh.
Per child.
So if you have three kids, times the math, you know, every time you're doing that.
I don't think that's the same anymore, I think you could split it up between kids.
Yeah, okay.
So we maybe have had some improvements.
For the amount of money that we're charged for the meals, or that is being charged, which again, I think Mrs. Brooks does a tremendous job. I'm not in any way, shape or form, you know, shading Mrs. Brooks and her performance, or job there.
Right.
I was just taken aback by the fact that whatever note I said, read, said that they also, the school, or, I mean, nutrition services doesn't see that money directly.
Right.
Feed from that company.
That's right.
And that really made me shake my head, because I'm like, that's a meal, you know, for a lot of these kids, that's a whole meal.
Let, let us, let us do research, it's been three years before you, three years ago before that was discussed, and after COVID and all of that, and see what else is out there, ask some other surrounding districts, how it's working for them, the good and the bad, and maybe we need to go with a different company, not sure. Yeah, that's, that's high, that's, that's tough.
And, and sorry, my one last piece on nutrition services, because this was a big issue that was brought up prior to COVID.
Yeah.
You know, minus balances at the end of the year, you know, and I would like to see us, as we're kind of monitoring it from January, you know, I'd rather see it two every two months, you know, versus having a large-scale minus balance at the end of the year. And let's see what we could do to kind of, I don't want to say stay on top of it, but, you know, if, if we're seeing that some of these people are struggling, what can we do to help, you know, I know.
That's excellent, Jay.
From the team board, you know, as I said, on that board, and food insufficiency is a big issue. And, you know, and there are ways that we could get, you know, try to get some help, so let's see what we could do before it gets.
Yeah, because I believe we took the health and stop and brought it into us. We don't have a separate committee, because that would have fallen under facilities.
Right, right.
Ten years past. So I think safety and, and food services is the full board now.
So let, let's find out what we can do in regards of the history, and also getting an idea with how we can help some of the families at each of the schools, specifically the elementary schools, so that we can really address, and all of them, not just elementary, all the way up. And again, about this, the whole company that with the, with the cards and the charging, okay? I'll talk with Mrs. Brooks, we'll see, and then also, I think every two months, since there's no longer free and, free meals, this is going to be a real problem, because people are struggling.
I remembered something, excuse the old guy for getting it earlier, but I, I read that up the line, there was a, one of the districts that has a program that has, and they had a unique name that would track kids, that it's a vending machine that has books, and, and parents could donate books, and then the kids are allowed to go into the machine, deposit some money and, and get a book, which is probably obviously cheaper than going to a bookstore, but I thought it was, what a unique idea to do that stuff there. And I'll get more information, I'll relay to you, but, you know, I don't know if anybody else saw, it was in, it was in the register. It was one of the regions that are up the line, but I said, what a unique way.
That's, that's right.
For, to put a vending machine that dispenses books, and I'm sure that if you're like me, I got tons of extra books sometimes that instead of just throwing them in, you know, the bins and stuff there, we could donate them to the school, and then kids could have.
That's wonderful, so find out where this happens.
I'll find, I'll get more information for us, but I.
That's very good, yeah.
Plant the seed out there now in case somebody else saw the same thing.
I, I think we've really focused on though, the, the whole need with the food service program, we know what, how standing jobs Brooks does, and then just what the issues are with where we currently are across Connecticut, across the nation, of the issue with the price of food and, and the cost of meals, okay? We'll come back next month, we've got a few weeks here for the next meeting.
Sorry, I have one more thing to the chair, I feel like you've got bookends of, of, mindful forgetfulness here. I did want to just give a moment to pause for passing of Arnie Reinquith, who was a longtime.
Oh, yeah.
Voice of the Wildcats, you know, for many of the sporting events.
Especially football, right.
Especially football, passed away in, right before the holiday season, and he was a class act and had a great voice. I mean, you could hear his voice coming off the driveway, talking about the Wildcats. And Mr. Stamelo, I'm sure could talk a little bit more of the connection, or personal, but maybe just in February, we could just have a quick moment of silence.
It'd be nice to do a moment of silence on the February meeting.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah. And, and it brings to light that Arnie at the end, and, you know, that brings up another issue with our press box of the, the poor going up the seats, I mean, the, the steps.
The ladder, you mean?
Well, the ladder through the roof, and I'm talking about the actual steps, even to get into where the announcing booth is. Probably, I'm not going to say anything real negative about it, but it's not up to slot.
I know first life woman myself, we, we also know it's an important need, and it's, I, I don't go up them, I'm not going to attempt.
No, I would advise you not to.
I can't go up the step, the ladder, whatever it's called. I think that's good discussion in regards to, the student council would like to come back. They're going to have several members this time, probably, Mr. Freud, about twenty.
I'll try to get as many students here as we can, so I'm sorry to get them out.
They'd like to have student voice again, so we'd like to maybe schedule February, we'll just have to have it early, like five thirty, and have pizza again. So that worked out really well, so we'll see what we can coordinate, so the council, the kids want to come. They want the student voice, and I think it'd be, be great, actually, for, for board this time, I think it'd be wonderful. Okay, the only other thing I want to mention, we are going to be talking specifically about the situation with the literacy program and with the state requirement to submit a waiver, or one of the three ways in which we're going to go. It's due like February the twenty-third. We want to put together an ad hoc literacy committee. If there's any specific board members that would like to be on that committee, I know we've got two from curriculum here, there, whatever, that would like to possibly be on it to discuss the situation with the six programs and, and so forth. Our elementary principals and assistant principals have already been doing a lot of work, a lot of research, and so we'd really like to have an ad hoc committee, so we're going to schedule it in line with some of these other meetings before. Be a small group, but I think it's very, it's very conducive and right on target with what an important decision that this is. I'll be honest with you, majority are all submitting waivers at this time, and we'll talk about that in the six, six literacy programs, okay? Kristen, you, you have quite a bit of expertise in that as well?
Not, not as much as I would like, Cabe had a webinar, and I was able to listen to about three quarters of it.
Yeah.
I had another meeting when the waiver part was explained.
I had another meeting when the waiver part was explained, so I think we, we need to do our research.
Right, and I think ad hoc would be a really great way to do it, so, you're interested, she's, Kristen's in her and Shannon, so, you just can't have a quorum, but we can have, yeah, so, anybody else?
I'm just, I'm just waiting.
Jake, okay, all right. So, the other thing, just to wrap up in regards, I'm going to be having a communications meeting, like I had last year, we're going to schedule that for January the 23rd or January the 24th. And this was a very good committee, and we're going to bring it back and try to encourage and expand some membership, so it, it worked really well last year. So, just a reminder, the January 11th meeting, to start the discussion on the working session on the budget, and January the 16th. Tomorrow, I'm going to go a little while over to join Ms. First Select Woman Anne Marie and the group in their roundtable discussions about just the budget workshop. That's all I have to say. I'm very pleased in, in summarizing everything, how the central office has turned out, it's been a lot of work, a lot of, how might I say, a transition, but it's been a great transition, things have worked well. Thank you for our select woman and to the town for the funding of this, and thank you for all those of you that attended the reception, so I just want to say thank you.
All right, thanks. Any questions for Dr. Compton? Hearing done.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?